It is six o'clock and time for the Kerrville City Council to be in session. At this time, we're going to be led in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Roman Garcia. If you'll stand, please.
Thank you, and if you would please bow your head, and I invite you to pray in your faith and tradition as I pray. I will start with the prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Bless the leaders of our community who are charged with representing the people of our wonderful city and making policy decisions for the benefit of all. Bless the city officials who are charged with faithfully carrying out the work of this body and serving the city, and bless the citizens of Kerrville in their everyday activities as they work, live, play, and worship. We trust in you with all our hearts and lean on your guidance and divine wisdom. We acknowledge you in all our ways and in all our meetings so that you will guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions to accomplish what is best for the citizens in the future of Kerrville. Lord, have your way in this meeting tonight. We pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have announcements of community interests. Mr. Kenyus?
Thanks, Mayor, Council. We do have a few items to talk about tonight. Let's talk about the library first, where they have several things coming up. They have started a new program. It's every other Wednesday. It's called Read to a Therapy Dog. And so the next one will be tomorrow from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Reading to a Therapy Dog has been shown to increase children's confidence in reading by providing a relaxing, calm environment to practice their reading skills. Now, I took that picture at the first reading to a therapy dog two weeks ago, and that dog's name is Victoria, and it is a therapy dog. And I can tell you, it has to work because just being in the same room with that dog is very calming. So I'm thinking about inviting her to council meetings. That's for 5:00 p.m. Now, that is by reservation, so if you're interested, call the library. This Saturday, we have Gardening 101. That's at 10:30 a.m. in the morning, and Ann Brown, who's a master gardener, will be talking about planting the right kind of trees and shrubs in the Hill Country. So I think that's probably going to extend beyond cedar trees, hopefully. I can't believe it, but next week's spring break. The library has a number of spring break activities, March 14th through 19th. For children, we have laps hit story. They have a movie, gaming, Storytime, craft event, and Lego events. That Lego event is a lot of fun to go see. And for adults, movie chat, shrouded mystery book club, and poetry and music. Now, those are going on at different times all week, so if you're interested in that, check out our website and go to the library page. All right. Parks also has a lot of activities next week and this week. Let's talk about this week first. Concerts by the River, that's Friday night, 7:00 p.m., and that's going to be at Louise Hayes Park. We're going to have eggs at 5:05 in the flashbacks, and y'all keep your fingers crossed. We're hoping for good weather. That may change between now and then, but right now, it's a go. And then next week, spring break activities. Both of these are at Kerrville Shriner Park. Thursday, March 17th, is Family Game Night, and that's going to be at the Recreation Hall. And then Saturday, March 19th, is Campfire Night that starts at 6:30. And then that's going to be followed by Movies in the Park, 7:45 at the amphitheater, Raya and the Last Dragon. So PG, I don't know anything about it, but those are always fun events. So those are two things that are coming up. It's like a lot of fun.
Any other thing from council on community interests?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to give a shout out to Robert Earl Keen and what he did for the Hill Country Youth Orchestra with his concert. They, I mean, they blew things out of the park, almost $400,000. And what a wonderful group that he did that for, and I just think we should be so proud to call him our own. So I just would like to give him a big thanks.
Yeah. And he also donated a custom guitar and a Rolls Royce he bought off his brother years ago. So generous. Okay. At this time, we come to some presentations, and I would like for the members of the Daughters of the American Republic to please come forward.
It's the Daughters of the Republic of Texas.
Oh, Republic of Texas. Yes, all right. Okay.
Oh, everybody does that. We're Texas, we're Texas.
City of Kerrville proclamation. The Daughters of the Republic of Texas was organized in 1891 to perpetuate forever the memory of the Texas pioneer families and the soldiers of the Republic of Texas. And whereas the Joshua D. Brown chapter, chartered in January 1996 in Kerrville, is one of over 100 chapters in the state of Texas. And whereas March 2nd, 1836, was the Texas Declaration of Independence, was signed at Washington on the Brazos. And whereas on March 6th, 1836, the Alamo fell and all Texian defenders died for the cause of Texas independence. And whereas on March 27th, 1836, about 400 Texans were slaughtered at Goliad. Now therefore, I Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Texas History Month in the City of Kerrville and urge all citizens to join with me this month in honoring our Texas heroes and proudly displaying the Texas flags. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this eighth day of March 2022. And I'm going to sign it right now. All right. Sure, sure. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a Salvation Army captain here with us today. There you are, all right. This is Captain Jeremiah Romack. And let me read this proclamation. City of Kerrville recognizes the Salvation Army with a Marte 2022 Kerrville Kindness Award. The Salvation Army proved instrumental and invaluable in providing emergency shelter during the recent winter storm in February. The shelter offered a warm place to stay for overnight visitors as temperatures dropped into the low teens over several nights. The Salvation Army also offers year-round assistance with food, clothing, medical care, and other basic needs to area citizens. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to the Salvation Army for its commitment and dedication to serving the Kerrville community, and it is signed by Mayor and council members. And thank you for all of your good work. Yes, sir. All right. And we especially in doing this wanted also to recognize Judy Johnson, who's head of Social Services for Salvation Army, has served there so many years and so ably in helping people in need. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. Here we go. One, two, three. All right. Good. Thank you. Will you present that to Judy for us?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. Thank you. Now, we have some members of the Recovery Community Coalition who are here tonight. I don't know how many we have. Let me see. Dr. Young, would you come stand with me? Brittany Andry, Richard Stolman, and Claudia Rickner. Okay. And Krista Lovett. So you're going to represent them all?
No, they're there.
Okay, okay. Come up here, please. All right. There you go. I overlooked you over there. All right. Let me read this resolution. And I'm going to read it in your name, representing the whole group. May I?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Whereas Claudia Rickner has served as a member of the Recovery Community Coalition, the date of service beginning January 14, 2020. Whereas Claudia Rickner has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Texas, Kerr County, Claudia Rickner has been recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Recovery Community Coalition, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community, signed by Amia's Mayor and the City Council. So let me present this to you. Okay. Krista and Dr. Young. And we will get these other two to the other members. Let's look over here. One, two, three. Any words you have for us?
Claudia, I haven't been on it long. Longer than I have.
Yeah, when it first started. So it's been, what, five, six years? So I'm turning it over to someone else.
All right, okay.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you. I don't often divert with stories, but there's one. We were talking about Washington on the Brazos and the Daughters of the Texas Republic. When Sam Houston became a Christian, he was baptized at Washington on the Brazos. When he got into the water, the preacher told him, "You've still got your billfold in your back pocket." Houston said, "That need to be baptized too." Now we come to our visitor citizens forum. Do we have any one signed up?
Yes, sir. We do have one, Bruce Stricki.
Okay. There's Bruce.
You know, I had somebody call me this weekend, mention, oh, Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. Had somebody call me this weekend, mentioned to me that I hadn't been to City Council and talking a while, and so I came down today to talk about how great Kerrville is. And as I was thinking about that after the call, I was thinking about how every council stands on the shoulders of the council before it. And in fact, the thing I want to bring up tonight goes back to the winter of 2018, November of 2018. How many people were on the council in November of 2018?
Zion and eight. I don't know.
Right? I think, Roman, and I'm not picking on you, but I think you were still in high school. You were a freshman in high school, I want to say. And it's just to talk about how important it is that we have that continuity, that we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us, and we stand on the, and they stood on the shoulders before them. And only in the winter of 2018, we started working on a project for housing in Kerrville. And in June of 2019, we came in the first draft of an ordinance for a planned development district for mixed density housing was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately to the City Council in that following winter. And then, and it takes, the point is, is it takes time to work through the process, and it's not because the city's difficult. In fact, I had a meeting with the fire marshal today that was really positive, where I could come and interact with staff, and that's true with Development Services or the Fire Marshal or the Director of Public Works. We have a great staff, and we all work together to work toward things, but it takes time to plan things, like an unrelated project, the Lennar Project, that the city worked on, little 30-acre project. So we started working on a 240-acre project in 2018. And in January of 2001, we put 200 acres under contract. And that started closing, in phases of closing. They closed on about 70 acres just about two, three months ago, and they're clearing that property. And I didn't, I purposely don't send things to every council member because I know I'm not supposed to do that. But to some of you, you got a photograph of land that's being cleared. It's about 70 acres of mixed density residential that's coming to Kerrville. And the whole point of this is how great Kerrville is to work with, what a great community we are. We have a need that we identified years ago in the housing study that I believe was done in 2019. Over 200 pages. The summary's, I think, 100 page, 183. That's very important. And we've been working toward these things as a community, not just myself. I happen to be the one who's standing here, but trust me, it's not my money that is making these things happen in the private sector. All I am is a vehicle that comes here and talks to council and has the honor to do so because as a community, whether it's staff, private investors, residents, the City Council, we all work together and make this community to be such a great place to live. And I just wanted to come tonight and thank you all as we're really thinking about housing and what a wonderful, today was such a beautiful day, Roman. You were exactly right. And so anyway, thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job, and you're setting it up for whoever the next council's going to be. And I know they will be not quite as good as you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back.
Roman, you were actually a senior in 2018?
I was actually a senior, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Now we come to the consent agenda. We have a motion in regard to that.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
The motion is second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the upraised hands. All right, good. It passes. Let's move on then to five. Hey, Ms. McLennan?
Presentation and acceptance of the audited annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay. Ms. Behrens?
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify a couple things first and then introduce our speaker for tonight. So we are presenting our highlights, I guess, of our annual financial comprehensive, our comprehensive financial report, ACFR, as GASBIE likes to call it now. And so we're not asking for approval tonight, just acceptance that we have delivered that report to you. It has been audited and helped prepared by an external audit firm as always, and so we're presenting that to you tonight. So with your permission, I'd like to introduce our speaker. So as you know, BKD, who's an independent auditing firm contracted with the city to conduct our annual external audit, and they also assisted with the preparation of our annual comprehensive financial report. So we had a team from BKD that consisted of a partner, an audit manager, and then multiple staff that have been working with us, as you know, since August. So it's been a pretty tiring effort to get it completed, and we're sorry we weren't able to present that to you. In February, we had some things beyond our control that made that, you know, not possible. So I wanted to introduce you to Dan Barone. So he's with BKD, and he's here tonight, and he is just going to present the highlights of that report, answer any questions, and then if you have specific questions related to independent lines or anything like that, I'm happy to answer those for you either tonight if I can or offline if need be. So Dan's a partner with BKD. He's with their National Public Sector Group and has more than 25 years of experience providing audit services to public sector, nonprofit, and higher education clients. He has a detailed understanding, of course, of requirements for governmental accounting, including single audits, which we were fortunate not to have to do this year. Next year with ARPA, we will have to do a single audit. And he also has a lot of knowledge about retirement plans, which is a big part of our financial presentation. He served on two special review committees for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASBIE, in their Comprehensive Implementation Guide, and also the American Institute of CPAs for State and Local Government Audit Guide, creating of that, and has served as the Government Finance Officers Association Special Review Committee Member to review reports like these that we're going to present tonight. So when we present our Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, he actually sits on the committee that reviews those reports nationwide. So I'd like to present Dan to you tonight and happy to have him here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Councilman, Mayor, and council members. Glad to be here this afternoon, this evening, with you all to share the results of the audit. So as Julie mentioned, the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report is a big endeavor, so you know, I do want to acknowledge your staff in working with our team and putting that together. When they couldn't take out, you know, they had to rearrange the words. It used to be comprehensive annual financial report, now it's annual comprehensive. They had to keep comprehensive in there because it is a very comprehensive document and takes a lot of work. So definitely want to acknowledge your staff for working with us on that. I'm going to walk through the presentation. There we go. I'll go through the audit results, and we have some required communications as well. Any of the findings, we'll have some financial trends, and then I'll kind of update you on some of the new GASBIE, new literature that's coming out that'll be in the next couple of years that will be required to be implemented for the city. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask me at any point in time. On the audit results, we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, the annual comprehensive financial report. And actually has, the way the Governmental Accounting Standards Board requires is that it's actually multiple opinions that we give. So we do give opinions on the major funds that are in the financial statements themselves. So we did have unmodified opinions. We also do the city's audit in accordance with government auditing standards, so that requires a gain in understanding of the internal controls over financial reporting and do testing of any noncompliance of laws and regulations, and we did not identify any findings that were reported in that report.
Can you clarify what you mean by unmodified? Is that unmodified from the last report?
It's unmodified means it's a clean opinion. So if you had a modified opinion, you would have like a disclaimer or a negative opinion. So it's unmodified meaning it's clean opinion. That's the kind of opinion you want. Some of the areas of emphasis from our audit standpoint, we look at all the significant transaction cycles, cash disbursements, payroll, cash receipts, and we gain an understanding of those internal controls. Some of the areas that we focus on, cash and investments, your long-term debt, a lot of the bonds. We do send out third-party confirmations on those, so we do confirm those balances, and we do test valuation on the investments. As mentioned previously, so we did receive some ARPA funding that wasn't spent, so we looked at that and made sure that it was properly recorded as unearned revenue. So it is on the balance sheet right now as a liability of unearned revenue, and as you spend that, those funds, then you will earn that revenue in future years, and then you'll have those expenditures that will have to be audited as part of the single audit. Some of our standard required communications, some of the areas that have significant estimates primarily include your actuarial assumptions related to your pensions and your OPEBs. There's a lot of information that is in there that you, that you actually have your actuarial studies done on, so we do look at that, and we do test those assumptions to make sure that they are reasonable. Your landfill post-closure care costs as well, too, and then some of the other estimates include allowance for receivables and then your depreciable lives on assets. And so we do make sure that there's no management bias in any of those and that all of those assumptions and estimates are reasonable. Quality of accounting practices, so the, your footnotes in the financial statements, they do disclose all of the significant accounting policies of the city, and they are all appropriate in accordance with the GASBIE generally accepted accounting principles. One thing we do as well, too, is we look at all your financial statement disclosures. We go through a checklist to ensure that everything that's required to be disclosed is properly disclosed, along with the financial statements in your footnotes. We didn't have any, any issues, we're not aware of any of the financial statements being in any other, any type of documents at this point, and we didn't have any issues with any of the auditors' judgments on the quality of the client's accounting policies. I mentioned, we did find those to be appropriate. Some of the other required communications, we did not have any disagreements with management. We're not aware of any consultations with other accountants. One thing we did have this year, we did have an implementation of GASBIE 84 related to fiduciary activities. So we did have to kind of go through and analyze a lot of your component units, a lot of your potential, what we call fiduciary activities, and we did not identify any that were required to be reported. So there was no change to the actual reporting for the city, but we did have to go through that exercise to ensure that there weren't any type of fiduciary activity that were required to be reported.
What would be an example?
For example, like an OPEB trust where you had money set aside for an OPEB fund. That could be an example. You could also have certain type of custodial accounts potentially if you collected money on another government's behalf and you had that money. So typically, it's a separate entity, it's in a trust, and it's not the city's, but you do have a lot of control over it. Moving on to some of our findings. This is actually a good slide. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting, so that's good. And as I mentioned, we did not have any other noncompliance type issues when related to government auditing standards that we're required to look at. So all in all, a clean audit and no findings to report here.
How do you define what would be considered a material weakness or a significant deficiency?
So there's, the standards lay it out, so a material weakness is a deficiency in internal control where you would potentially could have a material misstatement of the financial statements. So it's a, if we identified a deficiency, then it goes through an evaluation process. It's either a deficiency where we would just communicate with management. It would be a significant deficiency, which is more severe than a deficiency, but not as severe as material weakness. Material weakness is the strongest, the worst kind of material weakness, and as, the big key there is that it's a deficiency that could result in a material misstatement of the financial statements.
Okay. The council, you have questions?
No, it just, it sounds like they got an A+, right?
A+.
Awesome.
Very good. I mean, there's always minor things that we, if we find things in, you know, sometimes there's segregation of duties type things, we might just communicate those to management. So, but you know, all in all, anything that needs to be reported, there weren't any. So it's really, really clean audit.
I think we have one speaker?
Yes, sir. I think there's some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just really quickly, I just want to go through, I got a couple more things on the financial trends here, just showing, I'm not going to go through all these, but we, $50.8 million of revenues, and that lists the revenue sources there, primarily from property taxes and sales taxes. That breaks out the percentage of those revenues. The same with the total government-wide expenses, $47.3 million, and that gives you an idea of where that spending is. This is a financial trends of the net pension liability, and it was very similar to the previous year, and that shows the potential change if you had a 1% change, positive or negative, to the discount rate, what it would do to that net pension liability.
What percentage are we supposed to be at on that?
It's, right now, it's 6.75% is what TMRIS used for, for the last study. So that's obviously, can change depending on the market, and, but that's what it was this past study. So if you see it, you have basically a $5 million, $5 million net pension liability at the 6.75%. If it went up to 7.75%, then you would actually have an asset of $5 million, and then if it was 5.75%, you would actually have a bigger liability, so that's.
And that percentage is what's funded?
It's based on, yeah, it's based on the assets that are, that are in.
That we have.
That we have in the plan.
Ah, okay.
This just shows your general fund, unassigned fund balance, which basically means that your portion of fund balance, general fund balance, it can be used for any purpose. It went up 8.5% from the previous year, and it's 38.67% of the total general fund expenditures.
Sorry, can you go back just a second?
Yeah, sure.
And so the ending unassigned fund balance for the general fund is $11.54 million. So it's 1.54 million more than it was the previous year, so that's a good trend. And a lot of times, you compare that to the actual general fund expenditures, so you can see how much, basically how much of the expenditures you have saved up. And then here's your sales and use tax trend here, showing positive growth for both 2020 and 2021, so that's, that's a good sign. Couple, just my last thing that I just wanted to mention, a couple of the new standards. Next year, the GASBIE 87 will be required. It's a new GASBIE standard on leases, so it basically makes every lease a financing instrument, so you basically have an asset and a liability for every type of lease. There's no more operating leases based on this standard, so management will have to go through and identify all the leases. So, management will have to go through and identify all the leases and determine, uh, you know, how that, that works. So, and we're here to, to assist them and we'll be helping them as they need us. And then the following year, um, the ninety-six is subscription-based IT arrangements, which is similar to, to leases. It's kind of all your, your, um, IT potential, like, uh, anything that's out there in the cloud, any type of software that's, uh, that's, uh, subscription-based as well. To basically follow, um, similar, um, guidance as the leases.
Counsel, some questions?
That was that, that'll affect our, our new, um, communications, our public safety communication lease?
It could potentially, yeah. Depending on how it, if it's been, uh, how it's been accounted for.
It'll be new coming, coming online.
Yeah, so it, so it'll just be treated as a, as a capital lease now. So, you'll have the assets on the books and then you'll have the, the liability.
All right, we have one speaker?
Yes, sir. George Burdi. Thank you.
Uh, George Burdi, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So, um, I'd start with just saying, uh, you know, one day to review and come up with, uh, questions, comments. It's not really enough time for council members or citizens to, um, actually review and ask. You know, we've got our expert here one day and would have liked to have been able to see it as probably you guys were, um, earlier than we were given, which I guess it was posted yesterday. While you can certainly move to adopt this report tonight as you should, or whatever it is you're doing. I would respectfully ask that you maybe give citizens an opportunity to come ask you guys questions about it after they were able to review it at a future meeting. You know, especially because we're being asked to consider a bond election, which of course is impacted by what we see in the financials. But the one thing that I was able to sort of extract out of there, um, is because it's a topic that I, as you guys would probably know, I am focused on, which is the streets and capital assets of the city. So, what I'm seeing in there, if I'm reading it right, our streets specifically and capital assets more generally are depreciating faster than we were investing in them. Add to this that we have been trending to an increased percentage reliance on property tax to fund our maintenance and operations. An increased portion of our property tax, the dollars are going to debt service. It might appear we're trending further into a, a fiscally, I wouldn't say unsustainable, but sort of a dangerous position. But one of the things on, in there that I did have a question about, it, I couldn't remember where the page was. It was talking about capital assets and it sho- showed the current value of them. And streets in particular, it said something like, um, I don't know, thirty, thirty-some million. And it said additionally, two point eight million. The question is, is that not supposed to be showing what we actually added in value to the streets? And if so, I think the bulk of it was done with debt money. And I thought that when you borrowed money to pay into a capital asset, you weren't supposed to capitalize it in your financials until you paid the debt back. So, that's sort of a convoluted way of asking a question, but, um.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Who would like to answer that?
Is that all you have? That's all you have?
Thank you.
Okay. First, just, just as a reminder, we're not asking for approval of the financial report or anything like that. And again, our door is always open if you have specific questions. And we're, you know, have more than happy to discuss specific things. But these are externally and internally extensively prepared financial reports, um, that we're very confident in. And we're just basically giving them to you today. So, they'll be out there for any questions. We're happy to do that. As to the streets, um, I understand what Mr. Burdi's question is and certainly it's valid. But I think there's some important things to realize in that two years ago, we switched from a modified way of depreciating our streets to more of a traditional way of depreciating streets. So, we were in the low percentile. So, we were in the sixth percentile of the way, according to all cities, that we were depreciating streets. So, basically, we were using exactly what David presented to you earlier and using that streets condition index and using that as a value. And we were just expensing street maintenance instead of doing an actual depreciation. So, when there's a useful life of any, any asset, it doesn't matter what it is. If a street has a twenty-year useful life, whenever we switched over to the traditional, uh, depreciation method, we had to depreciate the streets that were on the books. So, you're gonna see a higher depreciation expense for a period of time because we depreciated them for the remainder of their useful life based on their value. So, you're gonna see that flatten out as those go away. Um, as far as depreciating streets and before debt is paid, that's not correct. So, when the asset is completed, that's when we actually put it on the books as an asset. It stays construction in progress until that specific street is completed. So, with the way that we're depreciating streets now, they're street by street, dollar for dollar based on useful life.
That's hard.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty easy actually because we're looking at the total project expense. For, for example, when we did, um, Olympic Drive, we know how much that street costs and we know what the useful life is.
Okay.
So, we take the cost and depreciate that over useful life.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hoppe. Is this for discussion or are we, are we voting on it?
So, you are accepting receipt of this document, uh, today?
Okay. So, we're, we're voting, we're accepting this document?
You're accepting receipt of the document.
All right.
I move that we accept the audited annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as presented. I will second that.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I, we have just a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any specific slides? Cause I was actually interested in our assets too, in terms of our buildings, um, streets, vehicles and other equipment. Do we have any, like, slides or information to be presented on how that's going?
No, it's pretty standard practice to present highlights of this report specifically due to the nature of the size of it. I mean, we could present it in detail, but that would need to be more in a different setting than this, um, for time reasons. Um, and also you have to consider there's a lot of things in this report that have to be broken out. Because when we talk specifically about what we understand as a general fund, we're looking at general fund operations. And so, when we do general fund for this report, we're combining everything, every small fund that falls into that general fund. So, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, uh, that it, it's, it's a lot to take in and understand in, in a short time. So, it's very standard to present just the highlights of the financial report and the audit.
Okay. Do we, do we have any information on, cause I was looking at specifically our buildings, streets and vehicles? And the amount that we put into our buildings was around one hundred twenty-five thousand. And the amount that they depreciated was around rounding up, um, about five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred fifty hundred thousand.
Yeah, without all that information in front of me, I wouldn't be able, I don't know exactly what your question is, but if you're asking me if that's what it says, I would have to.
I'm asking, so.
If you're asking why?
Why, how is that practice going to help us sustain our buildings and our streets and vehicles and all of our other equipment?
Well, every piece of equipment is depreciated individually over its own useful life. So, if you're buying a lot of things new, then you're gonna have, uh, the beginning of an asset. And you also have to think that when we start, uh, construction, you know, maybe a new building, which we didn't have this year, but a street's a good example. You have that street that's brand new. So, now you have twenty years to appreciate that, where a vehicle may only have three to four. So, when you're looking at the total depreciation, you're combining all of those things together. So, I don't know, but if that's answering your question, or maybe we need to talk about that offline. So, I understand exactly, you have the numbers in front of me and we can talk through that?
Yeah.
And I'm sure happy to do that if you want to.
Yeah, kind of, uh, the, what, what's really hard about all of this, and I don't know if council agrees or not. But I, we get our agendas on Friday and I try my best to be as prepared for these meetings as possible. And I was only able to review this report since yesterday because that's when it came online. And of course, over the weekend, um, understandably, because all business are closes, we can't review it at the city secretary's office. So, I have no problem with the acceptance of the, the report. It shows that this is kind of the time for us to consider it, um, and bring our questions and comments to that and, and for the public to do the same. So, it's, it's kind of hard to move forward with that when we really haven't had enough time to look at it.
Well, it's, it's not abnormal for the delivery, um, especially before the days of a website, for it to be at your place, um, for that day. I mean, that's happened even since I've been here. So, again, it's not an approval matter. If you need something explained within that, I'm happy to do that. I meet with people on a regular basis. I take phone calls from citizens on a regular basis. And so, if you have specifics, super happy to talk to you about that.
Sure, yeah. That's just my, thank you though.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept this report. All in favor, feel it, feel known by the raised hand?
Yeah, reserve my questions and comments for later date. Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay. Five B, Ms. McLennan?
Authorize the city manager to negotiate and finalize a license agreement between the city of Curval and Hill Country River Rat Inc. For operation of non-motorized watercraft concession at Knapp Park. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
Before you start, I want to, I want to congratulate you for your clean report.
Thank you.
Yes. And thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And knowing that there are no material findings or things that will put our city in jeopardy because we have the internal controls, checks and balances that we need and that our fund is growing so that we are able to have, what, thirty-six percent, um, available? Because it's an undesignedated fund balance is, is, I mean, I applaud you. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Ms. Boyle?
Good evening, mayor and council. For your consideration tonight is a proposal for a pedal-powered boat cruise to be operated by Hill Country River Rat Incorporated. We have representatives here tonight for, um, further questions if you have them at the end of this presentation. And the boat, as pictured here, um, is powered by twelve bicycle-type stations connected to two paddle wheels. It has a trolling motor for navigation purposes and it would be operated by a captain and a first mate and be available by reservations for cruises along the river. Operational times would be seasonally during daylight hours only. And as you may recall, this is the same boat that council, some of you attended, um, as a test cruise several months ago. The cruise would encompass Nimitz Lake utilizing Knapp Park as the docking station. And here are some graphics and aerials, um, I believe all of you are familiar with this area. Staff is supportive of this proposal and has been working with Hill Country River Rat for the past several months on deal points. Some of the major deal points that I wanted to highlight tonight are, um, as follows. Exclusive use of non-motorized pedal-powered watercraft must comply with safety protocols and all other regulations, laws and ordinances. Insurance requirements, adequate supervision, prohibited from operating any internal combustion motorized watercraft pursuant to city ordinance. Requirement to maintain the area in an even orderly condition. Responsibility for maintenance of the equipment and area to be maintained in a first-class manner. And to correct safety issues at the sole cost of licensee. Improvements are the responsibility of licensee at their sole cost, subject to approval on the permitting process. Operate during daylight hours only. Requirements for identifiable, identifiable uniforms of staff. And then a license fee of five percent gross revenues during the initial term. And then fees are subject to increase no greater than twenty percent for, um, successive renewal. Future terms consistent with license agreements that we currently have. Another aerial of Knapp Park, um, because it's not efficient or feasible to remove the boat daily, the licensee is requesting to keep the boat docked at Knapp Park when in season and construct a rodiron or fence, uh, at the park for storing and security purposes. This would restrict access to the boat for security when not in use. The area highlighted in red is the proposed location for the boat and fence. All improvements and alterations would be at the sole cost of licensee and must follow permitting process as I already explained. Staff is supportive of this request and Hill Country River Rat has already applied and received their approval permit, um, pending your approval of the, um, process tonight. Because this proposal requires installation of semi-private infrastructure on city property for public use, staff is requesting approval by the city council. As a reminder, um, this is consistent and supported by Curval twenty fifty, by Guiding Principle and by a specific action item of expanding paddle boat operations in parks. And our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize and execute an agreement with Hill Country River Rat as presented and authorization for the construction of the improvement at Knapp Park. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a, um, requirement for them to carry insurance?
Yes.
And a list, will we be listed as an additional insured under their policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that'll be in the agreement.
Okay.
Ms. Clarkson?
So, it's, I enjoyed being part of that so much. I, my only question about building this structure is that, not anytime I know in the near term, but there is the potential for expansion of that area. And so, how that would work with the agreement if the city and/or other partners want to further expand the area in the future?
I think it just depends on the scope and the feasibility, feasibility of what those improvements are. And I think we would be open to it. Their improvement is just a fence, um, essentially just to protect the boat. Um, so I think that's something that we could easily work around.
Ashley, where will that be? Will it be, because this is a, a public ramp. So, will it be off to the side?
Yes, if you look at your, um, your screen, it's on, it's in the area in red. Um, so there will still be access along the bank to the river and also direct access for pedestrians in the community to access the boat ramp. So, we're not restricting access there.
To the, the other, okay.
As, as director of Parks Recreation, why do you like this?
Uh, it's, well, it's, of course, it's supported by Curval twenty fifty and that's our job to execute Curval twenty fifty and the action items. And this provides an opportunity that, um, us as an organization is not currently able to provide. And that's why we do enter into public-private partnerships for organizations to be able to provide extended services that we cannot currently do.
And we won't have any liability if, if something were to happen to the boat i- i- at night or someone was to, you know, vandalize something, uh, you know, which I don't want to happen, of course. But what is the city's liability in a situation like that if it's a, if it's a public area?
Mr. Hayes, would you like?
Mr. Hayes?
That's why.
The insurance?
In the agreement, we'll make sure that's, that's ironclad.
Okay.
That they're, they're accepting that liability.
And I'm not, I'm just asking the questions. I'm very pleased about the, the prospect personally, so.
Yeah, and when I, when I rode on the boat and asked questions, um, you were, you rent solely to groups, correct? And not to individuals?
Yeah, the boat, the boat consists of twelve paddlers. So, we would prefer to have a group of twelve. I can move the boat by myself, but I'd need a driver. So, as far as paddling the boat, it's, uh, it's really simple. It's, uh, and as far as the security of the boat being there, um, that's why we're proposing to put the fence up. This fence is also removable if something happens. I've, I've also, um, considered the floods and stuff. And I went through flood plain with all the permits and everything with this and talked to them extensively about this fence. So, this is very important. This sent, this fence will be bolted in to the existing, uh, concrete footing there and can be removed by removing a few bolts.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it. The boats will also have, uh, security systems, you know, cameras. And God forbid, nobody, uh, vandalizes the boat.
Right.
That's my sole responsibility. If somebody does, they'll be on camera for the police to investigate.
Ms. Garcia?
Thank you. Uh, question and then a couple of comments. Is there a reason why we don't have a draft of the contract presented to us? I mean, it seems like we got a lot of the, the deal points that we want. And, and I know there's been a couple of discussion things that we've been saying, we'll make sure that's in the contract. But is there a way we don't have that so we can see it right now?
We're still finalizing and the draft of the contract and working through the deal points. Um, and so, the goal tonight was to get your authorization for us to finalize that, not to approve it.
Not to approve it?
Not to approve the contract itself, but to finalize, authorization to finalize, um, give the direction to the city manager to do that authority.
Gotcha, so then it'll come back to council?
No.
Yeah. But we.
Okay, so.
But we, the council can look at it and the contract.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, and then I guess a comment of mine is, I'm actually kind of excited. This is happening, um, Mr. Wright approached me around May or June of last year, sooner after I was elected. And then we were able to schedule that tour with the rest of council. So, it's been really good to see the progress of this and finally come to fruition for something that we can use for our community. And I've had several people ask me, why can't we have something like this for the city? And then whenever you. And then whenever you approached me, before I was elected, I said, this is something I really want to, you know, try to work with somebody on getting done. And then you approached me and were able to accomplish something like that, so.
Amazing.
I'm happy we're able to do that. So congratulations and thank you for your efforts on that.
You're welcome. Yeah, we're excited, real excited. This is going to bring a lot to the community. I mean, you know, I feel like it's going to be good revenue for the city and a lot of fun. And it will go with the 2050 plan. So, you know, there's, it's a no-brainer to me, but, you know.
Well, I'm excited about it because I'm really pro the use of the Nimitz Lake. I mean, it's, I've been here since eighty-four and it just, it could be used by the non-motorized boats and, you know, special kind of ways. I will say, this is the first time in almost four years that I've voted for a rat that I know of.
A rat, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have, do you have an estimated timeframe about when you may be coming online, if you can say publicly?
We are kind of working with Ranch Radio right now to try to get some publicity and Facebook and website and all that kind of stuff. We, we would like to shoot for the eighteenth or nineteenth of? Okay, April first. Let's just say April first.
Very ambitious.
But yeah, yeah.
All right, awesome.
Yeah.
Good. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and finalize the contract with the Hill Country River Rat Incorporated.
Sir?
You have a second?
James Wright did sign up to speak. Did you need to speak?
This is me.
Did you want to speak other than answering our questions?
Uh, really, you know, a few of you have been on the boat, so it's really pretty cool. One thing I want to add to is that this is not a combustible boat. It's also thirty-six volt electric powered if we need assistance. So that's kind of cool. And it also, the amenities on the boat is, you know, Bluetooth stereo, LED lighting, stuff like that. That's kind of cool. It's something that everybody needs to try to do. I mean, it's not a workout, don't get me wrong. This is like a mountain bike in first gear. It literally, you move the boat with your legs and your feet. It's, it's not a workout, so don't think of cycling thing. The main thing that I have a problem with on this is to get everybody to slow down. Because the boat is so easy to move. So, you know, it's really cool. That's all of it.
It is. It was fun.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. And it carries unanimously. All right. Five C, Ms. McLennan.
Use of a dial-in number, video conference software and similar means as a permanent method for the public to participate and address the city council during its meetings. This agenda item was requested by Councilmember Roman Garcia, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
We didn't put a PowerPoint presentation together, but due to the pandemic, we, like many other cities, we're required to find other ways to have two-way communication with our citizens. Like other cities, we chose to use Zoom to facilitate those conversations. Since March of 2020, we have hosted forty-one Zoom meetings and have facilitated one hundred and twelve callers. That averages out to two-point-seven callers per, per meeting. To break that down a little bit further, we have had seven meetings in which we've had five or more callers, fifteen meetings with zero callers, and nineteen meetings with five or less callers. The cost of hosting these meetings is estimated to be at fourteen thousand eight hundred annually. We are not including the cost of the equipment that is being used by Martin and staff as to the current presentation. We have implemented a number of redundancies to try to reduce the potential issues during a council meeting. If we do move forward with the use of Zoom, we have to have, we have to have, we have to broadcast the meeting in Zoom itself and broadcast the speaker from Zoom into the council chambers. We would have to set up some additional steps to avoid potential Zoom bombing, as has been experienced in other communities. So staff does not recommend the use of Zoom going forward due to cost, usage and added support and the fact that the council chambers are now continuing to be open, where citizens can come in and participate.
Council, comments or observations?
I'll just provide a brief comment of the reason, as I explained, whenever I requested this agenda item to be on our agenda was because we've seen, I think, some citizens have approached me. And I've seen it just before I was on council, and now that I'm on council, the use of Zoom or any other software that we want to use has, I think, they've enjoyed it. It's been beneficial for them. Being able to call in from either the comfort of their home or their office, wherever they are. I do have a couple of questions, if I may, Mayor.
Okay.
So I understand that a couple of the reasons, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to make sure I don't get this wrong, that we would not, or staff recommends that we don't do is because of staff pay and the maintenance of, to maintain our Zoom subscription.
That's part of it, yes.
Are we going to be maintaining our Zoom subscription regardless of whether we use it for council meetings or not? Because I know staff uses it for their meetings throughout the city. And I don't know how our subscription works. We may have a different one, like a business or a corporate subscription, rather than others, and others have different ones.
So most of the time, for Zoom, all we've been really using it has been in council settings. Our normal subscription that we utilize when we're using, like, video conferencing, what have you, is GoToMeeting. That's what we've been using. So at this point in time, unless we absolutely have to, we'll probably not continue the subscription.
Can we use GoToMeeting for council?
It can, but the problem is, is that the Zoom has a lot more security components to it. So it's a lot safer to maintain Zoom.
Gotcha, okay. And then I saw that the overtime for staff, and I was just curious, the, the people, the individuals who are listed, some of those, I think, are director positions. Do those not get paid at a salary level?
We get paid salary level, but in this, in this case, the one individual who's getting the overtime would be Keisha.
So that's the eleven, about eleven thousand five hundred?
Well, that's everybody together calculated on an annual basis. Because of the hours that we were utilizing. And so you take that, our total salaries, and then just do the math to calculate the overall cost per those hours.
These were based off of meetings in the past. Going forward, if it was an option that council was looking to utilize, we probably would have a different staff component to that. Because we have a lot of those staff members that are providing presentations during the actual council meetings.
Right.
And can't be manning the Zoom component.
Being both, right.
Tried to give you an approximation of what it would cost going forward.
This is going forward, not what it was?
Well, it's a look in retrospect, but it's really trying to give you an approximation of what cost would look like going forward.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
It does make sense, yeah.
I'd just like to say, you know, I find it a bit cumbersome. The other thing is, you know, not that many people used it, I mean, total. Plus, you've got staff that you, you're basically requiring two staff members to be here to probably about nine o'clock at night to operate this. We have so many ways that people can communicate with the council and with staff. I did an article in the paper about the transparency that we have. So there are lots of other ways that people can express their opinions and that kind of thing. I think it's interesting that it's not, it's not used in the US House or Senate. It's not used by the Texas Legislature. It's not used by the county commissioners. It's not used by the KISD board. We used it because we were trying to get people access in that unusual time of COVID.
That's correct.
I just want to thank you for the numbers. That's what I wanted to see. And the numbers just don't support it, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, that's why I asked for the information. I have no idea what was going on in the background, so I wanted to get some of that other information.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, I think to, to that point, what would we do if we, if something were to happen with COVID again and we were to limit seating?
I think at that point, we just got to have some contingency plans put together and possibly go back to Zoom if needed. But I, I don't foresee that unless, you know, something comes up that we require that. Not refer to the city manager.
We certainly have a precedent for it, and I think we got, received guidance from the state last time in regards to the governor's orders. So I think we'd have to evaluate based off the governor's orders at that time.
Sure.
And we pivot to make sure that we're maximizing citizen engagement and transparency.
I would just hate that if we were to have to do that for one meeting in one month, we, and then go back to Zoom, we'd be paying two-hundred-seventy-five dollars for a whole month's subscription when we only used it once, you know? So I'm just looking at all those kinds of things. And if we have alternate solutions to doing that, I'm totally open. I, I think everybody would probably be open to hearing other alternatives.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be a component we should keep in. And rise above what anybody else is not doing and make the City of Curville, we do do this for our citizens.
Do we have a speaker?
Yes, sir. George Burdi.
George Burdi, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. I was debating whether he even say anything. I mean, obviously, the decision was made before we walked in with the presentation kind of, it seemed like a task was asked about and a presentation was made to shoot it down. Instead of something that is arguably a added benefit, however small, to the community as far as giving them access to this, this room, this proceeding. To that end, they talked about the, the presentation having four staff members over time. Of course, three of them are already at these meetings anyway, so it was really just one, like he said. And there's ways to work around where that's not overtime, but if we don't want to do that, that's, that's fine too. I believe, I could be wrong, that, that PEG fund can be used for the technology that might be utilized in this. Can't speak to the security aspect of it, because I don't know. But it seems like it's an, it's an opportunity, if you're going to base it on lack of use, then maybe we should just shut down this, this room because how many speakers have speak at meetings? I mean, obviously, we don't do that. Open meetings that require us to be open, but what's the harm? If it's, if it can be shown as a minimal cost, it'd be worth considering. I'm not saying you got to do it, but I don't know why someone doesn't put a pencil to it and figure out a way to make it happen, but thank you.
All right, Council, do you have a motion in regard to this matter? If not, I'll move that we...
Need a motion on this?
We don't have to if we're not gonna act.
You're right, you're right. Okay, okay. Yeah, all right. You got a consensus, thank you.
Speaking to?
Okay.
Can we use that fund?
We have to research. I believe we looked at the PEG fund in the past. I don't know that it's capable of paying for the Zoom component. Obviously, it doesn't cover salaries and staff costs, which is the main driver of the cost which was presented to you tonight.
Well, I hope we can just keep it open if we're not going to make a decision one way or another today.
All right, okay. Five D, Ms. McLennan.
Resolution number twelve dash twenty-two. A resolution reducing the number of members of the City of Curville Code Review Committee. And there are no citizen speakers.
Good evening, Council. The Code Review Committee was created following the adoption of the Curville 2050 Plan. That committee was assigned as kind of an ad hoc committee to review through a lot of the implementation items in the 2050 Plan. Specific codes and ordinances to review and evaluate for update. Since their creation, they've accomplished the new zoning code over, or their update to the subdivision code and the sign code, kind of the big ones that we've looked at. Since the pandemic and the kind of pause and momentum that that board had, as we started continuing meetings, we've had several issues with a meeting a quorum, or at least delayed start because of quorum. So looking at the number of members on the committee, the fact that some of them have been there for almost four years now, we were recommending a reduction down to twelve members. And I believe you have those in your backup as well. That list is just strictly based on attendance. Staff would recommend the resolution to reduce that number, again, to help with the assistance of gaining a quorum. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
As a member of the committee, I'll just speak to the good work of the committee and a shout out to all the committee members who have been in attendance. I will say, it is typically the same group repeatedly. So dealing with having to make phone calls just to make sure we get that number up there and having the continuity, not removing any of the continuity from the people that are serving and are serving regularly and are very engaged. Just because I'm a member of, you know, the committee and, and Mr. Morgan as well. I know you're here and he attends regularly, so I'm in favor of doing that. I think that twelve is still a very suitable number for getting the good work continued.
All right.
Is that a motion?
We have no speakers, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve resolution number twelve dash twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. And it carries unanimously. All right. Six A, Ms. McLennan.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen. An ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six Building and Building Regulations, Article Nine, Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, by decreasing the membership of regular members and amending the membership qualifications for the board containing a cumulative clause containing savings and separability clause, establishing effective date and providing other matters related to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers.
Okay, Ms. Garcia.
On January twenty-seventh, we met with Councilmember Clarkson and Garcia to discuss BBA membership and qualifications. In that meeting, we presented our recommendation for changes that we identified by researching how six other cities manage their boards. We would recommend reducing the current membership from seven with two or more alternates to five board members with two alternates. We also recommend modifying the requirement qualifications to allow more flexibility. We currently have five members with one member retiring from the board. That will reduce our number to four. And with two applicants that are pending, we will fill the board and we'll just need one alternate member at this point in time.
Council, questions on this matter?
Well, as Mr. Garcia said, this was an agenda item that we previously wanted to make on appointments to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. It's similar to what we did with the Recover Community Coalition in changing the membership and qualifications. As a member of the interview team for this board, I would just let everybody know that I'm in favor of the amendments that we're making here. I was going to ask, do we have the, I think it was two applicants?
Yes.
Those are the two that we're referring to, right?
Yes.
Okay, that applied last time. We didn't take any action?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, that's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Do you have a motion on this matter?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen on first reading.
All right.
Second.
You got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, and the motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I hate to make y'all, or ask y'all to go back, but we need to go back to five D because the resolution didn't kind of reconstitute that board, drop it down to twelve members. And so there's a recommendation from staff that I think they want action on tonight to drop the CRC down to those specific twelve members. And that was part of the, certainly part of the agenda bill wasn't, it wasn't included as the resolution. The resolution just amended the actual construct of the board.
Okay, so
If you understand that.
You're now asking approval for?
The list of members.
To reduce the number.
And the list of members listed in the agenda bill.
Really approving the number, the names of the people.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
All right.
Are these the only people left on the committee, or?
Yes, these would be the twelve on the committee.
Okay. And we don't need a separate agenda item to do that?
No, it's encapsulated within the caption of the resolution item. I mean, that's what you're doing. I did include it in part of the resolution because that, the resolution just deals with the actual construct of the board, right, the structure of the board.
Okay.
So it's a procedural matter that we need to take care of. Okay. Who would like to make a motion on that?
Do you want to read them out? Do you want Mr. Paxton to read them out to you?
Please.
Wendy Anderson, Chris Chedzoi, Kim Clarkson, Larry Howard, Peter Lewis, Carolyn Lipscomb, David Martin, Bill Morgan, Mary Ellen Summerlin, Sue Teeman, Mike Welborn, and a staff representative from the Upper Guadalupe River Authority.
Who was that second one you mentioned?
Chris Chedzoi.
Oh. I thought it was Kim Clarkson.
I'll start.
Kim Clarkson, yes.
All right, okay. All right, third. Okay.
Motion to that effect?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I've been on this committee longer than I've been on council, Mayor.
Oh, wow. You've been on that committee longer? You've been on council? Wow. All right, Mr. Garcia's made a motion. Is there something?
Oh, no, I didn't. I was just asking if we need a motion. I didn't make an official motion.
I move that we accept the names that were just read for the Code Review Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, second?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. We're on seven A?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven, second reading, an ordinance altering the prima facie speed limit on State Highway one-seventy-three from approximately fifteen-hundred-and-eighty-five feet southeast of its intersection with State Loop five-thirty-four and continuing to the city limits, located southeast of Comanche Trace Drive, such distance equal to one-point-two-seven-four miles, reducing said speed limit to fifty miles per hour, authorizing installation of appropriate signs and markings containing a savings and separability clause providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two-hundred dollars and ordering publication. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. No staff presentation since this is second reading, has not changed since we voted on it last time.
Did the fine not go down? I thought it was five-hundred originally, or am I thinking of something else?
What?
The fine?
Oh, the fine, no, that, this is all, this is prescribed by state law, it's two-hundred dollars.
Okay, sorry, I thought it was five-hundred originally.
There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading.
Okay, cool, please.
Can I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash eleven on second reading?
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor, raise hands, and the motion passes unanimously. Seven B, Ms. McLean.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve, second reading, an ordinance amending chapter one-oh-two Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four Operation of Vehicles, Division One, generally by adding a new section to this division to prohibit the use of an engine brake or similar devices, providing a penalty for each offense, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject, and there are no citizen speakers.
All right. No staff presentations, this second reading, do I hear a motion on this matter?
I will move that we had to approve an ord, ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve on second reading.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand. Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. Now, we move to a public hearing, you don't have to be signed up to speak to this, if you'll read the eight A N for us.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-two, an ordinance amending chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by amending said code to include adding new definitions, revising the requirement of variances, requiring signs for notification, and other amendments as provided herein, providing a cumulative clause, providing for separability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers, however, this is a public hearing.
Right, okay.
Okay, Mayor, council, uh, we have looked at this one several times, uh, excuse me, uh, coming back for kind of a cleaned-up version of the ordinance that Mr. Hayes and I went through, uh, so the discussion and recommendations, um, recommended as drafted. I can go through these briefly or answer any specific questions. Um, just kind of going through the ordinance itself. Section one defines, or amends the definition for short-term rental to, uh, clean that up a little bit more consistent with building code. Uh, section two updates the definition for variances. Section three adds a notification requirement for staff to place a sign on properties that are involved in a public hearing. Uh, section four amends the findings of fact required for a variance pursuant to recent state law changes. Section five amends the section for the use of property located in one zoning district to benefit another. Uh, section six, um, is the requirement for a traffic impact analysis for mixed-use zoning. Section, section seven has a requirement for a traffic impact analysis for a planned development district zoning request. Uh, section eight updates the height requirements in the PI district. Uh, section nine, uh, adds garage sales under the exemptions from home occupations. Section ten relates to travel trailers and RVs. Section eleven, uh, defines the shipping container supplementary requirements for the PI district. Section twelve, um, corrects just a typographical error. Section thirteen, uh, again, back to the notification required for the signage on a property. Section fourteen amends the land use table for shipping container and medical offices. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you for, yeah, doing this, good job.
All right, do we have a motion on this matter?
Oh, we have discussion.
Okay.
Looking at, um, section eleven, I mean, yeah. And then section fourteen, because they're both have to do with shipping containers. I guess I, I still don't understand, can, and if you can explain to me, how can we define a shipping container as a land use?
The zoning code defines what land uses are allowed within those zoning districts, so we're, we're using that as a definition of land use.
Okay, and can you tell me how an individual's gonna use their land as a shipping container?
It's not a use of the land, it's the use on the land, so by placing a shipping container, it would have to be compliant with the zoning code.
Well, so the land use doesn't just tell you what you can use your land for, it tells you what you can put on your land? Because I, I know it, it kind of does both, because...
It's a combination, yes.
It, it kind of does. And in, in, in a way, when you have a land use as a golf course, it tells you, you know, you can put these things and make it a golf course. But when you specify your land as a shipping container use, you can't make your land a shipping container, you can put a shipping container on top of it, which would then make it a structure or a building, and now you're going to, like, kind of what you said, restricting on what you can put on it and what you can start, you know, material, materials you can put on it, and then how you can start building things and everything, and that goes into the materials and the building structure itself rather than the actual use of the land.
Not quite, placing a shipping container on the land does not make it a building. Placing a shipping container on the land, we are defining it as a land use. If you were to pull a building permit to use a shipping container as a building material for a permanent structure, the building code takes care of that, and that would be allowed. This is just the placement of a shipping container as the use of the property. And so we're defining that as part of the land use in the PI and the industrial districts.
I guess I, I may not be making my questions or things clear enough, but that, that's fine, we can, um, go on from that. I guess I have, um, a concern with the way sections eleven and section fourteen go in, um... I'll stop there in case any other councilor has comments or questions.
Okay, Ms. Clarkson?
Um, yeah, I just want to state that we've looked at this a number of times. Um, we've looked at shipping containers, we've looked at RVs, we've looked at cleanup language, and we've looked at renumbering. Um, and I am personally council-satisfied with where we are at this point and feel that staff can answer to any questions and has clarified to my satisfaction, so I just wanted to, that would be my comment for, for having the ordinance at this point.
I think that it's time that we moved on, and if it is a living document, is if something comes up later on that says we need to change that language in any way, shape, or form, we can do that.
Do I hear a motion on this matter?
Public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
What?
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, yeah, okay. Do we have anybody to speak to this? Oh, Mr. Barudy.
That's right, I figured you'd do, I was coming, right?
All right, George Barudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. Um, in the same city as our proud mayor. Um, so anyways, um, I'm glad Ms. Clarkson brought up the part about things being reviewed because section five, uh, is one that I am so proud, actually, that after three and a half years, we finally got it back to the way it was, and it now is reading as if it was three and a half years ago. It only took three and a half years, a lost lawsuit, and a lot of discussion to describe, uh, a situation, um, to put it back, uh, less confusing than it was, uh, for the last three years. Uh, the, section ten, the travel trailers, no problem with what's there, I just, I'm still not sure why it's as complicated as it is. A and B, thirteen A and B could have probably been restated simply as, RV and travel trailers cannot be used as permanent residents except for in the specified zones. Uh, C and D could be combined to say, RV and travel trailer are prohibited from being actively occupied for longer than fourteen days in a residential zone district. That would, of course, have been cleaner and simpler. Section fourteen and eleven that we're talking about, I'm not gonna try and change your mind because that's not gonna happen, but it, it was told to us that the case was prompted, or this change was prompted, by Shriner University wishing to ship, to use shipping containers as an accessory building. This is already permitted by right, as Mr. Paxton pointed out, in all zoning districts except the DAC and the MU districts, which allow it as a CUP. In other words, this entire section is an attempt to make an end run around state law that prohibits the regulation of building materials or aesthetic methods because all Shriner University had to do was come in, you're still requiring to get a permit for this, all they had to do was come in and ask for a permit for a storage building, and they would have been told, here it is, here's your permit, and they'd go put a, uh, shipping container down on the, um, concrete as however the restrictions are for a building permit for a storage building, and they would have been allowed to do it. So, this is really just a, an unnecessary code that nobody would ever use because if I'm gonna, I can use one in my house, I can go get a building permit, I think, to build a storage building on my, in my yard, and I can drop a shipping container on it, and ta-da, I've got a storage building. And I don't think it's in, um, in conflict with our current zoning code, so it just seems a weird zoning code to be adding, thanks.
Do we have a motion on this matter?
I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody else to speak, Mayor?
What?
Do we have anybody else to speak?
Yeah, we have anybody else to speak, okay? Public hearing's closed.
I'm sorry.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-two as presented.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Hopefully, we can review section eleven and fourteen at a later date.
Okay, uh, do we have items for future agendas? If not, we adjourn at seven-twenty-two.